Howdy, everybody. Today is Tuesday, August 13th, and the time is 5:30 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Capella City Council. We do have a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We will be convening into work session in the first-floor conference room. The public is invited and welcome to join us. Thank you very much. All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Time's 5:32, and we're in work session of the Capella City Council. We only have two agenda items, and the first one is a discussion regarding the agenda items. Does anybody have any questions for the consent agenda? Don?
No. I said no.
Ramesh, did you have anything on the PCs?
Question was answered.
Okay. Good. Thank you. And then the only item on the agenda is item seven. Anybody have any questions on the publication of the maximum tax rate? This is just an administrative requirement by the state of Texas that we publish a number that we promised not to exceed. Because it's more than promise, we can't exceed it at this point. All right. We've seen enough in there. There, we're going to move on. Item B is discussion, the city council's fiscal budget and plan.
Yes, your discussion. No. Thank you, councilor. So this evening, I just want to go over what we think we heard on the 29th, and then through some continuing discussions during the course of the week related to the '25 fiscal year budget. And then go through a little background, kind of setting the stage, and then I will conclude with the information that I sent out yesterday regarding some scenarios. And just for clarity, say, as we start this, the budget that was presented, submitted with the city secretary, has the tax rate based on the .46222, right? So that is the budget that we presented to you for consideration. From this evening forward, the bottom line is, based on y'all's discussion with the no-new revenue rate, the council, from what we could tell, wants to be in this discussion where something between the no-new revenue rate, what about .44, to the maximum rate of .462222. So that's just kind of setting the stage. The first thing, just want to talk about is just to remind everyone with the no-new revenue rate versus the .3.499 limited revenue rate, the difference over time. If you adopt the no-new revenue rate, what that translates going forward, that $1.5, roughly $1.5 million, that represents the gap between adopting the .3.499 limited revenue rate versus the no-new revenue rate. So if the council chooses to do that, that just shows, I'll call that potentially lost opportunity or loss of potential revenues totaling about $1.5 million per year. So that is all that information is for.
Income coming in early.
It would, yeah.
Ramesh, do you have a question?
Thank you, mayor. And Mike, for the benefit of people watching, in this red line, you're making the assumption that we stick to no-new revenue for next year and five years moving forward, correct?
It's an assumption based on that, the way that you stated that statement, yes, that no-new revenue rate would still be the rate used going forward.
And it's also possible that the city council can change the revenue expectation year over year, right?
Yes, if that's the direction that the council would like to go with. They could, the council can choose to increase the rate, to recapture what the increment is that you would be not collecting this year, and to adopt the limited revenue rate. So you have multiple options year over year. From a planning perspective, as I've indicated, all I can plan to is what you do now, as far as what the impact on the revenue would be. I can't guess what the stair steps would be, because I have no idea what you would do. Right? Okay. So again, this is based on the budget that was submitted on August the 5th. So you have the red box there that says proposed 2025 proposed tax rate. And so the information on the left is what the tax bill would be for an average homeowner, home value in 2025. And it shows that it would be an increase on the tax bill of right at $75. If the adoption is the no-new revenue rate, it's, you know, it's the minimus, the $4, you know, basically $4 per year. So that's the difference between the no-new revenue rate and the limited revenue rate of .3.499. All right? So one of the things that people may not be aware of, given how the formula works, is that in a community like Capella, we don't have the advantage of a lot of new growth in terms of new construction. The, you can look, when SB 2 was put into place for the first time in 2021, on new construction, you can see the small percentage, the amount of growth that we get in new construction. And overall, through time, from about 2000 on, in general, it's in a negative direction as far as there is growth, but it's not as great from year to year. And so this year, for example, the new growth only generates additional $195,000, right? And so a community like McKinney and Frisco and Stokelino and Prosper, those high-growth communities, they are able to obtain that additional revenue from new growth and it not be counted towards the no-new revenue rate or the voter-approved rate, right? So that is an advantage that those communities have that Capella does not have. Now, having said that, back in the day, before SB 2, all that new growth, right, everybody was getting the benefit of all that new growth and building it in the tax rates. And now, cities are limited based on the way SB 2 works, right? So any questions on that in general? The question came up about 2019 and 2020. There were several hotels in there, plus pro lodges, those buildings on the west side of North Capella Road. That's when that construction was going on. So that represents those two years in there.
Does everybody really understand the impact of SB 2 on our future planning? Prior to SB 2, if we came in at a number this year, we didn't have to worry about next year, because if something happened, we would have had the ability to change the rate to account for it. It gave us a tremendous amount of flexibility year to year to be able to know that the following year, we would be able to adjust accordingly. SB 2 essentially takes that away from us. And it's basically telling the city, us, the council, that, you know, you can't, you can't not plan on the future. You've got to understand that your rate is going to be capped at this, and, you know, those curves that you're seeing there would never have been able to happen. Well, the growth skews that a little bit, but like Mike was saying, in a constant environment like we're in now, you know, we're very subject to the sales tax rates and amount of sales that are generated by that. And, you know, we have to be very fiscally conservative and make our rate under SB 2 rules so that we account for potential decrease in the future revenue. I know that we've been very fortunate to have had good sales tax revenues over the past decade, but those are not a guaranteed revenue. Back in '08 and '09, those numbers plummeted very, very low. I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay. This is y'all's discussion. I'm just kind of marching through this, and we'll slow down when we, you know, when y'all want to have any discussion. The purpose of this is just to show revenues by category from 2019 through 2025. And so when you look at 2019 to 2023, one of the things you'll notice is that on the other revenue in '23 specifically, there is a little bit of a spike in the other revenue, and that is because of interest income, and I'll, you know, I'll just go to each other now and then come back. Anyway, that's just to show, represent that we have that additional revenue. Because on average, our other revenue doesn't grow. On average, it's about $12.9 million. And the other revenue is, are things like franchise fees, right, permit fees, court fines, and those types of things. And so you don't, especially remember, we're not having a whole lot of new construction, if we have some reconstruction, but... So those fees are somewhat limited, and with the way franchise fees are done now, with what the state has done, basically, there's really no growth in franchise fees, even though everybody's paying more for, you know, electricity and gas and everything along those lines. Those don't translate to any additional revenue for the city, because they basically limited what we charge for our revenue, for our ride length, right? So to go back, so then you see sales tax, and the sales tax from 2019 to 2023 is basically the amended budget. So when you see 2024 and 2025, that's based on, you know, where we are in the current year, and then related to what we're projecting for next year. Again, remember, this is under the submitted budget, right? So we're going, I keep saying that because I don't want to lose sight, knowing where y'all want to go with the discussion. All right. So one of the things, just to be aware of, with the .3.499 limited revenue rate, is that, and I may mention this, back in 2019, when SB 2 was introduced, we could pretty much predict what was going to happen with that limited revenue rate. It was going to generate about $1.5 million. That's about what it's doing, and that's what about it's going to do going forward, right? So this table on the right is basically showing you the cost of public work and public safety breaks in fire. And you see the little light blue across the top, that's, I'll call that the freeboard above of which the .3.499 limited revenue rate generates, above the cost for public works and public safety. So when then you look to the information on the left-hand side, the Oprah color, that shows that same freeboard in 2024 and 2025, and this is using the no-new revenue rate. And you can see in 2026, it's about even, but then beginning in 2027, 2028, and 2029, the property tax rate through the no-new revenue rate doesn't cover basically the cost of keeping the police and fire in market, because their step plan that we have adopted, which is consistent with what's in the marketplace, is about $1.5 million in and of itself. So without the .3.499 limited revenue rate, what that means from a budgetary standpoint is, because it's built into the plan, you're basically starting out below zero as you relate to property tax revenue. So I'll stop there, see if anybody's got any questions. All this is, is just to illustrate the impact of the difference as it relates to public safety and public works. And we, remember, the other revenues are limited as well, so, and the sales tax, because we don't know what's happening if we continue to budget more conservatively. So that's why that's an important number to remember. This is just another way to look at it with the numbers as it relates to the property tax. So I won't spend a lot of time there, because it's just really anything to say. So this is another way to look at it. The limited revenue rate is the orange color. The total public safety and public works cost is in the blue color, and the no-new revenue rate is in the green. So you can see where they cross at about 26, as far as just what the impact is going. Could be, I'll say, could be, if you do have that flexibility. And then overall, I know we didn't go over our five-year forecast with y'all this year. We will not do that again. We will go over our five-year forecast with the council. I know we sent the information out, but basically, when you start getting out in the out-years, because of the limitations based on the voter-approved rate, or what I call the limited revenue rate, with our expenses, with inflation, you can see that we do have to address rising expenses. Now, this is a forecast, and that is something that we're talking about already, as far as how to do that. So for those who've been on the council for a while, you may remember in the five-year forecast, I know Mayor Bianca remember this, I don't know if we were doing it that much then, but there was a time in the five-year forecast, you know, it was projecting out the property tax to be like, I don't know, 80 cents. 79 cents, and the expenditures were growing and everything along those lines. So the reason I say that is because the five-year forecast is a tool, that is all it is, that allows us to be able to look forward. And it's something that this community and we continue to do, has probably been doing it for over 25 years. So it's very helpful. It's always helpful to be able to see that, see what potentially could happen if we don't make adjustments, but we've always made the adjustments as we've gone along in the five-year forecast. All right? So, based on what we think we heard on the 29th in the course of the conversation, the two main points were, everybody around the table seemed to express support for the budget as it was presented, as far as what was in the budget and what was being done. Then we were asked to basically take a look and see if the no-new revenue rate were used, how would we make up the difference on the approximately $1.5 million, right? So, two things, right off the bat, that all these scenarios take into account, is we had discussed with you that we were conservative, and we used the 2.5% interest on, for interest income. So we went ahead and bumped it up to 3%, not like we're taking great risk, but, right, there's the opportunity, but that is different. So that added about $300,000 in income on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, we're in the process of working through contracts right now and everything. We just hadn't budgeted in, if you will, what we think the reduced contract costs will be. So we spent some time just talking about that, and that came up to about $120,000 in savings. And that was primarily in our phone systems and basically the Granica system, which is our agenda, all that kind, let's just say, all that kind of stuff, as far as that goes. So with those two in mind, right, we can go forward and take a look at what those scenarios generate. So, and the budget that was presented on August the 5th and submitted to the city secretary, the tax rate is, that's the VAR, that's the limited revenue rate at .46222. That's a 6% decrease over the current tax rate. A taxpayer and the average value home in 2025 will be paying $75 more on an annual basis than they currently pay. On scenario A, right, scenario A is taking into account that $300,000 new revenue, the $120,000 in reduced expenditure. So that would take the tax rate to .458632, .458, let's just say that, okay? Because we're going to start splitting hairs in just a minute. So that's a 6, a 6.7 decrease compared to the current tax rate. But what the difference is, you can see there, it's nearly $20 less, right, to $56 for the current 2025 average value home. So right off the top, there's a little bit of a difference right there. Scenario B and C, both, oh, I'm sorry.
I can call him a question.
Oh, okay. Scenario B and C are utilizing the no-new revenue rate, right? And so that's the tax rate of .448968. So both of those have the same tax rate, because they're using no-new revenue rate. How you get there, or how you can consider getting there, are two completely different ways. For a homeowner in that case, even under the no-new revenue rate, the way the calculation works out is still a $4, over the course of the year, it's still $4 more, right? In terms of what that is. So under scenario B, if you, excluding the little bit of changes that we've talked about, under scenario B, the difference would be made up by actually budgeting the sales tax that we are not currently budgeting for. So I think the estimate of the way things are going right now, the estimate is about $24 to $25 million, Kim, is that right? It's a total grant, general fund budget, not the other special revenue funds. But we're only budgeting at a number of around 17, I think. So this would then increase that by roughly 1.1, 1.2, let's say, $1.1 million. So we would go from 17 to 18.1. And all that is, is just a recognition of, yes, we are collecting that sales tax, and then putting in place and budgeting for that additional sales tax. This goes to y'all's question about utilization of the general fund and just a transfer out of the general fund undesignated. I think I, we got you the comment, because you were talking about the bond rating. Kim did speak with Jason directly. The whole point of this is, first of all, if we were to do that, that would be not consistent with the plan, so that's part of the reason why I was pretty adamant last Monday night about not doing it that way. Secondly, Jason basically said it would raise a red flag if we were to do that. And then if we were to do it a second year, it would definitely raise the red flag then for reconsideration. Point two of that is, it's not consistent with the plan if we were to do it that way, because when we, going back to 2021, in 20, when we started setting up these designated funds, we set up a designated strategic reserve for the purposes of, if we are not successful in the lawsuit and/or the legislature makes a change, we had basically, we'll call it a cushion, that allowed the council and staff to work together over the next three to four years, from whenever that decision is made, to make any particular reductions in expenditures, if necessary, beyond what we've already reduced in terms of our operations, right? So the plan's in place, and so if you, if, as I said earlier, if you put scenario B into action, scenario B is actually putting into, what am I trying to say?
Activating.
Yeah, it's activating, thank you. It's activating the plan in advance of the lawsuit. Again, I would not recommend doing that, but that is an option for you to consider. And then scenario C is where there was a question about, well, okay, what if we were to reduce our particular expenses? So again, using the $300,000 in revenue increase, using the $120,000 contract, so we're consistent in all of them. So the reductions would be for Celebrate Capella, that would be $100,000, taking out of the general fund for sidewalks, and moving that $350,000 over to the IMF fund, which is the street sales tax, and that is a purpose it's used for. And then removing the co-compliance officer, approximately $100,000, removing the economic development specialist is $100,000, and then removing the food truck in Old Town, programming, coordination, activation, which was $500,000, right? And so each of those were related to something, to the Vision 2040. And if you were to do, if you do all those, that brings you back down to the no-new revenue rate, and you can see what that means. Now, one of the things, the little note that I made, you know, there's a couple of things. One is that increased values from a home standpoint in the community were about 9.73. That was, you know, what Kim and Jessica ended up using to calculate the tax rate. So you can see there's a 6% decrease, there's a 6.7% decrease, or an 8.7% decrease to the current tax rate. There's a little bit of a difference in terms of paying $75 for the year for the full amount of services, everything in the budget, or $56 a year for the full amount of services and everything that's in the existing budget. Scenario B is still keeping everything in the budget, and then scenario C is the one where you're actually having some reduced additions, because those are all basically new, with the exception of the general funding of the sidewalks. And the last thing I'll say to you is, if the council were to say, and look, you don't have to settle this tonight, I would like to have some more clarity and direction, but over the next couple of weeks, let's, you know, à la carte something, we will calculate, you know, what that is and how to make that up. Just to, just to keep it in somewhat real, if you want to write this down, for every $100,000, let's say that you modify, it's .0009 of a penny. So the best way for me to describe it is, it's the minimus at $100,000 a pop, right? It's when you start getting to the larger numbers, it starts adding up. So, mayor, that, based on what I've, what we've heard over the last week and a half, this is what we have before you, for y'all to have the discussion that you need to have. And on the 27th, what we'll need, that's the reason I say, if we can get some direction tonight, great, but what we'll need is some clarity on the 27th, because Kim can't calculate the tax rate on the fly, just like that, that evening. So the more robust your conversation is tonight, the more helpful it will be to us to know what to potentially expect on the 27th that will help you in your decision-making process. Right now, if you were to take the budget as submitted, it's a straight-up .46222. Anything different than that, these are the calculations.
So Mark had a question.
Yeah. My question is, so all three of these scenarios are predicated on an increase in interest from 2.5% to 3%. How confident are we that that can occur? I mean, is this a 50/50 kind of thing, or is it 90/10? I mean...
Well, they've been, they've been saying that they're going to do a rate decrease for well over six or seven months now, so that happened. Now they're saying the job market is kind of slowing up a little bit, so it could be in September. And I think I mentioned to you the risk pool, which is really adverse to risk. They're using 3%. So that gave me a little bit more confidence to be able to say that. Look, I'm not, I'm not on the Fed board, I don't know. How much are, what are, what are we getting right now?
5.33.
Right. So that's a pretty significant series of cuts, the bankers right there.
Well, to average 3% for the year from 5.33, you would have to go down below it quite a bit.
So a couple of things to keep in mind, is we take our investments out six months, that's one. Two, removing $31 million from the general fund to IMF, if you pass that in the budget. And then the other thing is, we do invest in pools, and the pools have to, as the market comes down, they have to adjust, and adjust quickly, because they have to keep it at a $1 within a few cents. So that, that's what their, the average needs to be, is within $1. So they sell off as the market comes down in order to be able to stay and meet their requirements.
With that explanation, I feel more comfortable about 3%.
It is good validation that you said...
The risk pool?
Risk pool is using a similar protection, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Ramesh?
Thanks, mayor. And Kim, the bond that we recently issued, that money is also going to be sitting and earning some interest, correct?
It does, but that does not do anything for your general fund or any of the other funds. That can only be used for projects. When you issue the bond... When you issue the bonds, you state that we're using it for this.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Bijju?
Thank you.
I was looking to say. I was with you.
Yeah, my question for you, the initial proposed budget was 5.352 million increase, that's about 8%, correct, from last year?
I think it was about a little over 7, yes. Yes, I'm looking over there.
Yeah. So out of the, out of the $5.35 million increase to this year's budget, how much is for the police and fire's step up cost?
The market adjustment and the step plan was about half of it, right?
Fifty-seven percent.
Well...
It was about 1, 1.1 for...
Police.
Police and 2...
2.1 for fire.
Correct.
So that's...
A little over 50.
3.2 with a 5.7.
Absolutely.
What about for the other employees?
The majority of that increase is all related to market adjustments.
Not talking about administrative staff?
Yeah, the, this increase, the, it's 3.5% increase for merit for the balance of the organization, maybe that's a way to say it.
So, so the increase in salaries was 5 million, about 5.7 million, and 9.7 million was everyone else. Public safety, so police, fire, and public works account for 3.9 million of that. Or, let's see. 69% of the increase is public works, fire, and police.
Okay, I'm confused. So out of the 5.32 million increase in budget, what is the...
So I'm giving you, I'm sharing with you the amount of increase in salaries alone from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25 was about $5.7 million.
Okay, that is, that is separate than the 5.35 million, or 3.2 million for the police and fire step up.
So your budget increased $5.3 million, but there was some decreases, capital went down.
And what was salaries and step up?
That's what I was giving first, was the salaries increased 5.6. So salaries increased $5.6 million. Of that 1.1 was police, 2.1 was fire, and then about $645,000 was public works. And then about 1.7 was the, was the remaining. So community experience, community development, and then general, which would be finance, the manager, city secretary, human resources, enterprise solutions, the internal service funds.
So Bijju, excuse me, help me understand your question. Were you wanting to know, you know, the total budget increase for last year, or for this year, excuse me, was 7.8?
So the budget increased 7.75%. The budget went up $5.3 million.
Okay.
And that is because there was a, so the net, that's the net impact, because not every category went up. So capital went down about $560,000, which you would expect because we set up the capital replacement funds, right? And then the other was the transfers. When you pull out the one-time transfers made in each year, the transfers went down. And that, again, is because we're doing that one-time transfer for traffic and facilities. So we did not do the one-time tran, we didn't do the annual transfer in the budget, that's why that went down.
So I saw a look of question on your face when you asked that.
No, I'm okay.
I'm sorry, I heard percent and I heard dollars, and so I got confused. By the way, just to clarify, there was some misinformation floating around on social media that about the 3.5%, there were some people had been told it was 3.5% increase, which was absolutely incorrect. In fact, if you take a look, our rate will actually be going down, not increasing. So there was some, that was some really bad social media posting.
Is there any good social media posting?
Not, not that I've read recently. I know, you know, it's, I got hit up by neighbors, you know, hearing stuff, and it's like, where did you hear that? And it's like, well, somebody told me. It's like, okay. So it's, it's good rumor. Anybody have any questions on, you know, quite honestly, I got to be honest, we've discussed this, the reduced scope. The one that hit me was the reduced funding for sidewalks. That, guys, we don't even want to go there. That, that is, that was the most difficult period when we didn't fund sidewalks adequately every year.
But we're not removing the funding, right? We're just going to fund the same amount out of the IMF instead of the general fund.
I didn't take it that way.
Yeah, the, the idea is it's no longer being funded in the general fund, it's being moved over to IMF. All that's doing is it's replacing doing something else. I mean, there's only so much fund in the IMF, right?
But like you said, the IMF is actually intended for...
But it's, can be used for that purpose, that's correct.
I just, it's, I don't...
Ramesh?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, thanks to Mike and the staff for coming back with options in a short notice. I think for me, scenario C is no-go unfortunately, because in time we put it out there and say we are going to stop providing services or take something away, that's not a very popular decision. I think for me, moving forward for next year, I'd be working with the city council to see if we can do automation to reduce expenses. I think the way it is written right now, cutting services, that would probably not be a good idea.
Jim?
Well, I guess I've got to speak up since I was on the proposed that we apply the sales tax to begin with. So I do want to thank Mike and of course Kim and her team. I mean, this is, this is wonderful that y'all listened to us and presented us with actually three different scenarios. And I'm very thankful for that, I'm very appreciative of the effort and everything that you've done, so thank you. I don't like scenario B, because I don't think we're at a point to activate the plan in terms of, you know, as I understand the plan, it presumes that we know the outcome either of the, of the issue, either by virtue of a final unappealable ruling on the litigation or the legislature has spoken and taken that away from the courts. You know, maybe the legislature will speak, they've been muted thus far, and the litigation could go on for years. I mean, well...
Look, I'm just saying from a personal standpoint.
They're just getting the summary, they're just getting the summary judgment in August, and that's only on one of four key issues. And I just, I don't see how in the world we get to an October trial setting if he's only entertaining summary judgment on one of the four issues just a couple of months before the trial setting. So I would say that's probably highly unlikely. So to activate the plan with respect to how we live under the new regime permanently, either by way of legislation or court ruling, I think would be horribly premature. And one of the things that really came to mind looking at it was that we wouldn't be able to tell the businesses anything as to what they're supposed to be doing to change their collection and distribution of sales tax, because we wouldn't know. So I think B is out for me, because I don't think it's practical matter that we could implement it. I, I...
Can I? Okay.
Sure, no, go ahead, go ahead.
I just want to make sure that we have the same understanding. So what I heard is today, if we get over $23 million in actual, we are budgeting for $16 million in the last couple of years. And this scenario B is instead of assuming $16 million, we are going to book, assume we're getting in 17.1. So we're still not assuming we get out $23?
Well, but as a practical matter, it would actually activate the plan that would then get us over a five-year period to living under the new rate, whatever it would be, whether we prevail in the litigation, or we lose in the litigation, or the legislature comes up with some hybrid. And then we would inform the businesses what they were to do with respect to their sales tax collection. And I just don't think, because it would, it would start that process that presumes finality on the destination versus origination issue, that we'd be in a position to tell the businesses anything or, or to know what we were to be doing. So I think B is woefully premature. Although I thank you for bringing that to my attention as a, as a scenario, I think I appreciate the option. You know, on A, I mean, I, I like that, I, I think it's safe to presume 3%, because the risk pool is presuming that, and as Don pointed out, mathematically, we'd have to get well below 2.5% or 3% to hit that average. And I, while I think it's possible there may be a 25-point, you know, basis point cut in September and maybe another one in December, I don't think it'll be enough to get us below 3%. So, and my crystal ball is as good as y'all's is, so, you know, that's probably meaningless. And I like the, the fact that we've got a little bit more certainty on the contract costs and we, we've got $120,000 there. So what, what I'd like to do, looking at this, is I'd like to take the $300,000 in additional revenue from the interest income, I'd like to take the contract savings of $120,000. Then I'd like to go ahead and, and accept the cut in expenditures in scenario C with exception to the compliance officer and the economic development specialist. I mean, I absolutely believe we, we need another code compliance officer, I've said that before, and my opinion's unchanged. And, and I understand and have heard Mindy's explanation for the economic development specialist. And I think we, we may have some activity with respect to Old Town going forward on that, that, that specialist could be important. And given the way that development's been restructured and everything, I think we need an extra set of hands on deck for that kind of work. But, you know, $100,000 to, for the drones, the fireworks are beautiful, I don't, I think we could live without, without the drones. Moving the $350,000 to IMF and taking out of there rather instead of general fund is just, I mean, the work's still getting done, and I think there's an adequate amount of money in IMF where it wouldn't strip us down to anything that was unbearable. And then the $500,000 in Old Town, my thought there is that, you know, I mean, we've got the field trip coming up this Saturday, we're all really kind of scratching our brain pan trying to figure out what, if anything, we can and want to do with Old Town. I think, you know, my observation's been this council's been very deliberative in that, we're really trying to figure out what the next step should be. And so I don't, I don't see any harm in taking a half million dollars off of this next year's budget for something in Old Town when we don't even know exactly what it is that we want to propose or do yet. So if you add, if you keep the two, the code compliance officer and the economic development specialist in the budget, and you remove the rest of those expenditures, and then you take advantage of the interest income addition and the contract cost savings, then you're right at $1,404, $1,425, something like that. So we wouldn't be right at the no new revenue rate, we'd be slightly marginally above it, but we would have shown, I think, excellent diligence on behalf of the taxpayers and everything else in the budget gets done. And I do support, you know, the step up for all of our employees, administrative staff, police, fire, public works, the whole shebang. 3% is, is a good increase, but we all know inflation has exceeded that already, so, you know, I, I think that's at a minimum should be done. So, you know, we're trying to balance, you know, there's a lot of expenditure that we want, but at the same time, I think staff's done an excellent job of identifying a few expenditures that we could cut. And instead of worrying so much about the revenue increase, I think we can take some off of the other side of the ledger and have a real effect on the, on the taxes that people are paying, $4.14 plus another 5 cents maybe for the year. You know, for total tax hit is certainly something that was well within my expectations, and I'm, again, very thankful for the effort and for everything that y'all have done.
So how would that play out in the future, since this would be a one-time adjustment? How would that play out in the future as we move forward with the step adjustments and rate of inflation?
Well, I mean, well, look, I mean, we're looking at this budget now, right? So I'm worried about this budget right now.
I hope we're looking for the future.
Well, I mean, we are to the extent that we're still not getting into the sales tax, we're still not activating the plan, we're still not, you know, looking at, you know, increasing revenue per se by looking at the expenditure side, but, I mean, we could live without the drones going forward in perpetuity. The $350,000 for the IMF, I mean, that work's going to get done, and then we'd look and see what work remained to be done over and above that for the next year as we have every year. The Old Town activation, I mean, I don't know what we would spend it on, we don't even know what we're going to do there. So, you know, we may look at it and say, okay, now based upon what the council's decided, you know, we, we're going to need $750,000. And then we could have that discussion, or we may want $250,000. So, and as far as the, the savings on the contracts, I mean, that sounds like that's already baked in in terms of what they're able to look at there. And then, you know, the interest presumption just puts more money on the table without changing anything. So I, I don't see that it really commits us to anything going forward in any way that's irretrievable or that, that can't be changed.
Mark?
So here we're saying, Jim, I'm wondering if, if we're recognizing 3% as the, the interest rate, currently it's at 5.8, is what you're saying?
5.3.
5.3. Say it comes in at 5 overall, that was a quarter percent drop. Could we take that, that difference and further down the road, apply it to one of those things that we were, that Jim was talking about cutting? Or is it something we've got to have it to be able to plan all, say, the event coordination for the, excuse me, the Old Town event program? That's something that you, I guess we just can't do on the fly, and could be, could we use that money for something else? Because I think you, didn't you express some, some concern on using the IMF versus the, or excuse me, yeah, using IMF instead of the general fund?
You're asking me, I'm sorry, because you're... Yeah. It was making sure. No, I, what I'm saying is, in, with the general, the use of the funds in the general fund for the sidewalks, right, and basically sidewalks, alleys, streets, primarily for the sidewalks, by moving it over to the IMF, what I'm saying is that, that, that pool is an unlimited amount as well. So if you, if you take $350,000 out of the general fund, that's fine, it's not an expenditure on that side, and you say, okay, well, I'm going to budget it over here in the IMF fund, it's only so much there. And so something else will drop off. I, I can't tell you today what that something else is that will drop off. So does that make sense? It's just, if there's only, if there's only, if there's only a million dollar, I'm thinking this up, if there's only a million dollars in the IMF fund, and it was all allocated for, and now I'm going to take $350,000, I'm going to put it in there, I still only have a million dollars.
Right.
And now $350,000 of it, if we're using it that way, is being designated for sidewalks, so then then something else got to drop off.
But, but isn't there more money in the IMF right now that we would cover the 350, still fund everything in the budget?
Yeah.
And have a...
So this goes back to overall philosophy and direction. Because we have been functioning as if the revenues were limited by 334... Because we have been functioning as if the revenues were limited by three, three, four, we have not budgeted with the anticipation of collecting the other funds. So the answer to the question is, yes, there are other funds over there. The majority of them are being designated for different purposes. But just the annual income to the sales tax fund, much like in the general fund we talked about, it's, I'll go back to my story. It's, we're saying there's only a million dollars. Are you collecting too? Yes.
Right. No, I understand.
But for budgeting purposes, and this is why I said the timing of this discussion just fascinates me because we're within two months possibly of the trial and the legislative session. So it's just a different philosophy. It's just a different approach. And if the council's comfortable with the idea of, hey, we've been collecting that money. We'll continue to collect that money. And, you know, if we want to go spend more over there, we just amend the budget and we just go spend more of it. I mean, I don't make that flippantly when I say it. But that's the difference between how we budget and what we collect and what we're looking out for down the future. So that...
So how much do we collect on the quarter cent dedicated sales tax for infrastructure?
It's a quarter cent of the twenty-three or twenty-four million dollars. So take a quarter of that.
Okay.
So is that roughly six million?
Yeah.
Basically.
I'll accept your math.
Yeah, well, I mean, if I just divide a quarter of twenty.
Right, right.
So six million in streets and sidewalks, I mean, alleys, six million in crime control districts, six, well, no, more than that. Twelve in CRDC, and of course, twenty-four in general fund.
And the IMF, I mean, that dedicated sales tax, I mean, we have to spend it on infrastructure, right?
It's restricted.
It's a restricted fund.
It's one of those special revenue funds.
Right.
It can only be spent for those particular purposes.
Exactly.
And so, again, not having the history some around the council have, we have historically been budgeting in the general fund for certain improvements like sidewalks and not using those. Because then we've been able to pour that money into the woodwork and the various types of streets or anything like that. That's what I need. It's just a trade-off. All you're talking about now is playing a different game than we've played before. That's a philosophical discussion for y'all. And we will adjust accordingly, right? So that's...
And we need to have that philosophical discussion, but it's not going to be a short-term philosophical discussion. This council's been on a plan for the last twenty to thirty years that's worked very well for the city. And as part of the staff's consternation is we're asking them to change direction, which is not anything that this council had previously even indicated to do. Ramesh, you had a question?
No, I hold my talk. Someone else wants to go away.
Don?
So after thinking about this a whole lot and having a number of discussions just with different people, I go probably to the philosophical aspect of this of what personally thought I thought was an easy change ends up being a, has additional dominoes to fall and becomes a more philosophical discussion. And my concern at this point is adding stability and uncertainty to the staff and how they approach going forward. And I'm not saying that we can't have philosophical discussions. My concern is, at sort of the last minute or the eleventh hour, what I thought, personally thought was going to be somewhat of an easy, you know, not that big a deal, may have broader ramifications. And that's my concern at this point. I'll probably lean toward option A. I can see my way into option C with some variation, like what Jim was saying, some variation of cuts. As long as we don't, personally, my view would be, as long as we don't go down rabbit trails and start counting and angels on the head of a pen trying to figure out which expenses to cut and which ones not to cut out of the budget and things like that. I don't want to drag this out longer, I guess, my personal view at this point. So I'm probably leaning more toward A for that reason. But I can see my way to C. And a lot of it has to do with the stability of what environment the staff able to work under and plan for the future. And come January, we will, I feel sure we're going to have a much more robust philosophical conversation about where does the council want to go? Does it change or not change? But there will be a lot of time to do it at that point, whereas there's not as much time to do it now.
So thank you for your comments. One of the things that I'll tell you that Mike and his staff need is they need consistent direction from us. We can't be changing our mind literally yearly and have them do a good job of planning for the future. That is their job. They plan for the future. We give them the 2040 plan, and they plan for it. And going back and forth, vacillating on what kind of tax rate we're going to charge doesn't let them be able to do that. I appreciate, and yes, we will have a much more robust discussion in January. I thought we had the opportunity this past January, but apparently that was not the case, so...
Well, I'll speak for myself. I think there continues to be, I think more of us have become more and more educated about how the budget process works and how the financials are put together and the implications of all these things. And so I think that will also help with the conversation, understanding the ramifications. And a lot of it has to do with what staff has provided for us to, this is the way this really works. So that's, I think that's part of the evolution of sort of where we are at this point.
I just...
I don't feel like we've ever had a great conversation. Well, not in my three years, let me say that. In January, there hasn't been a lot of discussion between the seven of us about what do people think or philosophical differences or anything. And I think there will be this time, and let's see where that leads us.
Well, I'll go back to 2019 when SB two was, was it 2021, excuse me, when SB two?
Twenty nineteen's when it introduced.
Okay, it was...
It became effective in 2011.
It was 2019, we started talking about it then. And it was like, well, we've got a three... The rate before that was eight percent. That was our cap. And there was numbers that were floating all over the state legislature, five percent, two percent, three percent, four percent. They finally settled at three and a half. Well, at that point, it's like, this was when interest rates were half of a percent or one percent. And so three and a half percent to the state was a huge number. Well, we're not, we're at five point, five percent this year? Five point three percent?
Five point three.
I mean, you know, the three point five doesn't even catch up with that. So we're below the cost of living or the consumer price index increase. So that's what bothers me. You know, we're, if we don't adopt that voter approval rate, then we're actually moving downhill. And that's something that this council has never, never opted to do. And that's the, that is the philosophical discussion that we need to have. But I appreciate your comment. You know, it is kind of, to your words, a little bit late in the game, I guess, I'm paraphrasing for you, to be doing it at this point. Jim?
I mean, yeah, so if the IMF, if moving the three fifty from the general fund to IMF is, or relying on IMF funds, rather, to fund the same thing creates any kind of a sales tax hiccup, then I'd say let's cut the hundred thousand for the drones. Let's cut the five hundred thousand dollars out of Old Towns. We forgot what we want to do there. And let's go ahead and take the interest savings and the interest income and the contract savings and just see where that gets us. It'd still be above the no new revenue rate, but it'd still be a significant, you know, cut in relation to seventy-five point three-six a year that we're talking about now. And then we can talk about the sales tax issues in January. You know, it seems like that's been a big concern and sticking point in a lot of ways. So, I mean, if that's part of the problem, let's just go ahead and proceed into the general fund for the sidewalks as we had planned. And I'd urge the balance of the expenditure cuts along with the two base revenue and expenditure items for the front end.
Ramesh?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start out by saying that two weeks ago, the staff, Tim and team came back with a wonderful budget. And they were basically listening to what the city council wanted. And for me, when I saw that we were about one point five million dollars away from a no new revenue kind of a budget, which to me was two percent of the total budget, right? So I felt like this could be one opportunity where our residents could get away with not an increase. So that was my motivation. And that was why I gave a thumbs up to ask the staff to go through the pain of trying to change tracks so close to the end of the game. So that was the motivation for me. Personally, I like scenario B because I understand where the long-term impact. So assuming approximate numbers of, we are budgeting for sixteen million, our actual, let's say, is twenty-three million, right? And at least for this year, we could take that one point one. And then for next year, look at scenario C. And I think we need to be more deliberate about things that we're cutting in scenario C.
So help me out. I'm not understanding. Are you saying you're in favor of going with scenario B and looking at doing C in the future?
Yes. And if there's any painless things that we can do in scenario C? As an example, if the foot truck, instead of half a million, if it can be done in half the cost, I'm sure the staff would come back and tell us that's a possibility. And if that's the case, we should do that. But my goal is to see if there's a way that we can get the residents to pay close to the same bill that we did last year. And I understand it's not a promise we can make to them every year.
Even with the rate of inflation of over five percent and even with the property value increase of nine percent? Is that a fair assessment?
So, yes. I mean, again, because we're so close to, if we can find two percent saving, it's an opportunity for us to give them the break this year. And I'm not saying that we would be able to do that every year because we still have to present a balanced budget.
I heard you say this year, and then yet, next year, you want to... Okay, I don't understand exactly where you're coming from.
So, okay, let me try to simplify it. I'm trying to solve the problem for this year, which is, I think, taking the money from the sales tax assumptions, assuming that we book sixteen, rather, I mean, we book seventeen point one instead of sixteen, helps us achieve the goal of not increasing the property tax bill.
So are you aware that taking the sales tax funding would jeopardize our bond rating?
No, that's not the...
I think he's talking about, if I understand correctly, is taking it not from the fund balance.
Yeah.
It's just budgeting more of the funds from sales tax that we have the last several years not used in the budget process. So, yeah, the number, it doesn't matter at this point, but seventeen plus or minus, out of the potential of twenty-three, just based on what we...
So then we would change our message back to the, our bond council?
We would just be budgeting a little higher. Maybe that's the way to say it, as opposed to what we think the impact will be. We're going ahead and utilizing more of a percentage of the sales tax than we have in the past.
But that is then a change in the policy.
Well, it's a different, it's a different message, yes, but it's not using the general fund.
Understand. Okay, Kevin?
Thanks, Mayor. So this is my view of everything. So I think Mike and his team has brought us a budget of everything that we talked about and asked since last year, start of the budget season. And I think that we, as a council, had, you know, with respect to Ramesh joining the council recently, took the direction that we gave them and moved forward with that. That's the city manager's proposed budget. That's what I see in that. Everything in that expenditure reduction list are things that we have previously thumbs up and said that, you know, we wanted that and, you know, said it's supported citizens' asks that they had in the 2040 visioning process that the citizens were engaged in. So with that being said, I fully support the city manager's proposed budget. Now, with that being said, I understand that scenario A, you know, we've gone through and, you know, made some adjustments and worked some numbers and things like that. I'm fully in support of scenario A. And the reason why is that if we wanted a different scenario, we should have spoken up in the retreat earlier in the budget sessions, as Don said earlier, about kind of the eleventh hour kind of situation. That's what really concerns me about this entire process is that staff did everything we asked them to do. And then there are, that shift in philosophy at the last second does not reflect the stability that this council and this organization has had over the past decades. And so while I understand, I fully understand and expect that we will have a much more robust conversation in this coming January, I do not think it's fair for us to change course and direction at the last moment. So I'm going to support scenario A. And I ask us to all bring our A game in January to, no pun intended with A, of course, there. But to be prepared to have that philosophical discussion about what we want the future of the city. Because as Mayor said, we don't get, you know, number five, best place in the nation to live, you know, by changing philosophical directions at the last second. So I want us to be very mindful of that as a body, as the citizens who have elected us to make sure that we're being mindful of their money. And I think we all are. I mean, to be very honest, and I'm not trying to say this reductive or anything, but we're arguing about fifty-two dollars right now. I mean, like, if you look at it right there, I'm not saying that's not a lot of money, all right? So we're trying to be very mindful of everyone's dollars. And I feel that respect around this table and in this room. But I want us to just be very considerate of what that philosophical direction is going to be. And maybe potentially communicate to staff how we need to see data presented to us so we can make a more informed decision about, you know, what things might be added or taken out of the budget if we go, you know, with a voter approval rate or a no new revenue rate and really look at those tangible things. Because I think that would really help this council. I will say that I really appreciate staff on scenario C going through and actually labeling things like, this is what it would take to get us there. This is what it would take to remove. So I think that the tangible nature of looking at certain items helps us really see what that effect is. So I appreciate the work of staff, but I'll be supporting scenario A in this with the notion that we will be having an excellent conversation come January. Thank you.
Brianna?
One of the things I've always appreciated about everyone who has sat around this table before us during our service and staff that has been here for years, the staff that's here currently, is that we haven't looked at a budget in a vacuum, in a tunnel. We haven't looked at it for that particular year. Staff and council has always tried to look at it holistically, right? Like, how is this going to affect other people around the table? Like, setting it up for financial stability and being fiscally responsible in what we do and how we spend our money and always thinking about the future. And so I just want to be, I think, like, I hear everybody's thoughts and concerns. And we can, I appreciate staff going back and even, you know, listening to everyone's concerns, even at the timing, you know, maybe not necessarily being ideal, but making sure, like, let's just look at this. Let's look and see if there's any couch money, as you would say, right? And look to see if there's anything different that we can do. But I also trust the fact that they have looked at that and that, and I know that the directors at, with Mike's... the directors at with Mike's leadership have been very um diligent about the types of projects that they put in front of us and have really thought through and listened to our citizens. And so I just wanna be careful when we start thinking about, well, let's just not do this or let's just not do that because I I haven't been out there right now, but I don't know that there's, you know, and I have seen in the past, right? In in situations of of potential tax increase where we've had lots of people out there. I haven't seen that, right? I haven't seen that this time around. There are a few people, they have concerns and rightfully so, we should have that. People should question what we're doing and make sure that we're doing the right thing and making sure that we are looking at our budget. Um but I know, and I can only speak for me, is that we are transparent about everything that we're doing. And I know that staff has gone back and looked at every scenario and and I just wanna be careful that we um aren't minimizing or, how can I say this, decreasing the needs and the wants of what our citizens look for, right? Like, I know we can say, well, we just won't do the drum show, right? It's a hundred thousand dollars. Gosh, do you know how many people loved the drum show, right? Like, like you think about what our, and that's just one example. But if you if you, like, we do, we pay so much for surveys and to find out what our citizens want and what they need and why they live here. And I just wanna make sure that we're not looking at this in, you know, in tunnel vision and being like, let's just take this, this, and this, because it has long-term effects. And, you know, um and I, again, I mean, as Councilmember Neville said, like, it affects all of us, right? Fifty-two dollars, ten dollars, any type of increase affects all of us around the table and everybody, and I wanna be mindful of that. But I also wanna um be mindful of the fact that I know that staff has thought about um has looked at this holistically. And I just wanna make sure that we're not doing something to then put future council members and staff in a bad position or in a negative position later because of what we did today. So all that to say is, I, you know, I I I support, you know, scenario A. I want to make sure that um we continue doing what we're doing and that that we're also thinking about. You know, Jim, Councilmember Walker, you made this point about who knows what's gonna happen in two months, right? Putting our lawyer hat, right? Let's be realistic. This is this has been a conversation for years. I've been long enough to hear note to know that we've been talking about it, but we don't know what we don't know, right? Which is why we're always trying to be um conservative in what we do. So it's a long way of saying, like, I trust staff and um and I know that we will do the right thing. And even if we agree to disagree, I just also wanna make sure that whatever we do, we do this as a unified council and we support each other's decisions. So um anyway, thank you to staff for all that you've done. I'm gonna have some banana. My god.
I want to learn that silence is not a bad thing.
I know, I know, but I'm just saying neither is eating.
So she's silent about eating.
Don't don't get out of way. That's precious.
Yeah.
So one of the things, this is not for today, or even even this month, but for January. When we go into the retreat, the winter retreat, and it's and it's perfectly okay to discuss it before, think about that long-term vision for the city and what you want that to be. Think about how you're gonna support that as a councilman. You know, think about um, you know, we've got a twenty forty plan that is, I think that was pretty well widely accepted by everybody that participated in it, that was part of it, that saw it. Uh interestingly, we, the council, had very limited input into it by on purpose, which I didn't agree with initially, but I saw it worked out quite well. So, you know, sometimes, yeah, you know, I really thought that we were supposed to be in there being part of it, but I'm very happy the way it turned out. Uh we do have a responsibility to that to that twenty forty plan. And then we also have a responsibility to the to our to the city itself as an institution and our employees. You know, it's a it's a very, it's a very complex equation that we've got. It there's a lot of moving parts. There's a lot of, there's a lot of pieces that go into it. And that, you know, it's not a, it's not, it's not a black and white equation. So anyway, that'll be, that's part of the discussion that we're gonna have to have starting in January.
So what do y'all wanna do for tonight? So we can help Mike get the, it sounds like A is pretty popular.
Again, let me say, tonight, your most important action tonight is actually the vote you take in the regular session for advertising. The maximum, right? That's right. That's the most important thing, whatever that is. This is the information that we would have before you on the twenty-seventh, right? In terms of what happens. Know that, you know, I'm I'm gonna go ahead and bring it up now just to make sure everybody's clear. We'll talk about the process more later. But the process is adopting the budget, adopting the tax rate, and then ratifying the tax rate. In the vote process, the budget can be four-three, but the tax rate and the ratification rate have to be at a minimum of five-two. So there has to be some co- coalition. There has to be some some idea of um kind of piggybacking on what Brianna said. In order to adopt a tax rate and a ratification, there has to be a five-two vote. My point being on all this, y'all do have to make a decision uh on uh of what, however you wanna slice it. I I am walking out of here right now not slicing and dicing anymore than what's already been done based on what I've heard. So use that as a springboard for the next, you know, few minutes of conversation if you'd like, or you'd like to go off on your own and kind of think about it or whatever, but you know.
Ramesh?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh I can hear that scenario A is popular, so just want to do one more minute of pitching for why scenario B is actually a better option. So you get everything in scenario A. I think I think in January, when you made a commitment, I don't know if you made a commitment that uh you'd only use sixty percent of the sales tax. And and what Mike is saying is instead of sixty percent, we'll use sixty-six percent. So you get everything, you get it scenario A. The only um difference in assumption is rather than sixty percent, you're using sixty-six percent.
So how in that, did you, do you understand that you lose the the SB two uh margin, the three-point-five percent?
So yes, we don't actually lose it. We can, we can use it next year if we want to. We we're not going to, if we wanted to, we can use the three-point-four-nine-nine uh next year. And on top of it, we can use next year three-point-four-nine-nine. So we don't, we're not losing it.
Do you believe next year that you would be able to stand up and tell your constituents that you're gonna advocate for a seven percent rate increase?
And and Mayor, if you want, when you talk about hypotheticals, you know, we can all throw hypotheticals out there. I think it's not, it's not just my decision. Uh the decision is going to be a majority decision, right? So as a majority, we'll do whatever the majority decides. So I don't know if that answered your question.
Not not directly, but anyway, uh I believe Jim was next.
Were you through, big guy?
Yes.
Okay. Uh thank you, Mayor. So look, I mean, it it seems like the philosophical toe that I have stubbed relates to the sales tax. And, you know, obviously, everyone's in favor of having a fulsome discussion about that in January, so that's good. You know, and and I'm not being inflexible on all this. I mean, A is not as good as C in my view, although, like I said, I want the code compliance officer, I want the economic development specialist. Mindy says we need him. I I agree with her, uh and I trust her judgment in a big way. And uh so, you know, I'm not being inflexible or anything. I mean, if if A is what this group can support, then I'm in favor of A. I mean, we've managed to go ahead and find some uh some, you know, some savings on the contracts. And we've, you know, found a little additional revenue on the interest that, you know, it doesn't move the needle overall, but it 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 does show that, you know, we're we're trying and we're we're not leaving any stone unturned. You know, at the end of the day, you know, the reason that I don't support B, Ramesh, is because it technically activates the plan of of taking what would be the final decision on what we're left with on sales tax, either by way of the court opinion or the legislature, and then implementing it. And since we we we're not gonna know what that decision is, I don't think we can implement the plan going forward and then educate the businesses on what they would need to change in their sales tax collection and all like that. So that's what that's what I meant when I said it's premature. There will come a time when we have that answer and then we can have another philosophical discussion as a group as to how we want to approach that. But um I just don't think we're there yet. So it really comes down in my mind to we take advantage of the the two items that staff have have found for us that doesn't sound like it comes with any undue risk. You know, we have the fulsome discussion um in January about about the balance. So, I mean, the drones were popular, Brianna, you're right, of course. But, you know, there there's gonna come a time where I think we're going to be looking at making some potentially unpopular decisions on expenditures. And um, you know, as I said here today, a hundred thousand dollars for the drone, it doesn't move the needle financially, as Mike points out, really, truly. But it signals a certain thing to the folks paying the taxes. So, but look, like I said, I'm I'm not inflexible here. I I have an immense respect for this group uh as I do for the staff. And so if if A is is what we're gonna settle on is, you know, the I mean, I'd prefer to have more than five-two, but if that's where we're gonna settle, then, you know, I'm I'm willing to be there with the rest of you. I I much appreciate your willingness to have this discussion. Um after, you know, I threw the sales tax thing out there, I'm much appreciate. Again, I I truly appreciate staff's effort. They're they continue to to amaze with their willingness just to go to the mat every single time. Uh and it's it's really appreciated this time because I'm the one that caused all of it. So uh it means a lot to me. So that that's where I'm at at the end of the decade.
So thank you. Uh I've got Kevin and then Ramesh, but I wanted to say something first, uh kind of clarifying. Jim is correct. There was a plan when the state, when S three-point-three-three-four went into effect of what was gonna happen to the funding. There was a, there is a plan in in place. The plan was to go into place when we lost the court case.
Or one.
What's that?
Or one.
No, that's a different discussion.
Oh, okay, fair enough.
That is a completely, that will be a much.
We haven't had that discussion.
That will be a much happier discussion. There there are two discussions that will be had. We've been planning for the worst. And that's what the, that's that's what you're talking about.
Right, right.
The better case is we win the lawsuit and we have a really happy discussion at that point. But we're not, since we're being very conservative, we're not even, that's not even on the table at this point.
Right.
Which is going to your point, yes, then the the you started to partially implement the plan that was, you know, put in place five years ago now. Okay, so thank you for for bringing that up. Uh Kevin?
Well, you guys made some great points that I was going to make as well, uh so I appreciate it. But, oh seriously, the scenario B, I one-hundred percent agree with Jim that it does kick off the that plan that we were talking about early. And I really, what what I really am hoping for is that we have get to have that happy discussion. But um to me, scenario A, it does a, it does a lot of things with continuing to plan for the future, uh continuing to what I consider is it it buys us time. Scenario A buys us time to where unfortunately, if we do lose the lawsuit, it gives us the ability to have these hard discussions, these difficult discussions about reducing expenditures and and things like that, but over a period of time. So hopefully, we can, I don't know, like, maybe wean, you know, wean certain services off, you know, things like that. I I I think about that type of thing. It's the time that is important, because what will jar people is if we go in and we're chopping out, you know, several million dollars in expenses and it changes people's lives all of a sudden. If we can, you know, just work that over a five-year period or so, it allows our citizens an opportunity to adjust, our staff an opportunity to adjust. It allows us as a body to philosophically have those discussions about change. Uh it allows leadership long-term opportunities to figure out what's the directions and how they can advise us on the direction that we need to go. And then I also think about scenario A, I I, you know, we go back to the protecting the triple-A bond rating. You know, again, we, Mike made the joke about having a quadruple-A bond rating. It's because of councils of the past have been so diligent, have been so responsible, that we are set up for uh in the amazing position that we are now. I really think A protects all of those things. It keeps that in place and it allows us that runway. And I mean, I remember when I ran uh for council in twenty twenty-one, uh you know, I I things like looking at homestead exemption, looking at all, like, we've we've had these discussions. And fundamentally, I just don't support those things until three-nine-three-three-four uh three-point-three-three-four lawsuit is done. That's when I think we have the flexibility to be able to do that, because we have a better idea of the landscape. The legislature's always gonna be a part of the play as as well, you know, until there is legislation for or against. That's always gonna be in play, but at least let's get over one hurdle. And then we can start having those discussions to go from there. So again, I just wanted to reinforce why scenario A. Uh I I think for right now, in in this place and time is the right move. And then then we can continue to have our discussions from there. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Ramesh?
Thank you, Mayor. Um thank you, Jim and Kevin. I I agree with what you guys are saying. And I I want to correct my assumptions with with uh city manager. Mike, I think uh in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty, when three-one-three-three-four came in, the plan that was in place is out of every ten dollars that's actually coming in, we will assume that it's only six dollars is is coming in approximately.
Yeah, when we first started, uh if you remember, we talked about this a little bit in the budget this year. When we first started, it was more like forty-five percent.
Forty-five.
And keeping. Uh as we've gone each year and we continue to talk to our businesses and the comptroller keeps changing the definition,
Yeah.
um we've identified uh at least one business we believe we thought we were going to lose, which is a significant sales tax payer. So that's how we've been able to jump it up. We didn't jump it up arbitrarily. We jumped it up based on what that one business and our understanding of how the sales tax works.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, and the rest of that was, we also then reduced the expenditures correspondingly to then match up with the overall revenues.
Thank you, Mike. Uh so again, I think we started off assuming for every ten dollar coming in, we'll assume only four-point-five is coming. And and now we are up to up to six dollars assumption. And what the plan is saying is rather than assuming six dollars, let's assume we're getting six-point-five. Now, it's not an immediate problem, because uh, you know, the we will still have some time to fix it, right? Um so if we lose, worst case scenario, if we lose the lawsuit this October, and we don't know if the revenue coming in will drop down to seven or six, we don't know that. And then there will be some time for us to catch up. So all those, uh the reason I like scenario B is it's a good short-term fix to meet a goal which is um help our residents not have an increase in bill. So that's why I like the scenario B. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody have any closing comments? Brianna?
Um I I think I just wanted to echo what what Jim said earlier, just um I really appreciate the conversation. I I think that's important. Um I think it's important that we. I think it's important that we feel safe to bring up questions and to challenge, you know, maybe challenge or question, or however we wanna bring it up, right? Like, hey, is there another way for us to do this? I, I appreciate the fact that, you know, there's always, there's always multiple potential solutions that come with potential risks, but we just, we need to know what those are, right, and think through it. So, I just wanted to say, like, I, I think this has been a really good discussion, and I look forward to January and continuing it and thinking through kind of where could we potentially, you know, carve, change, amend some of the expenditure as needed, so.
Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I look at Scenario A, and I think it gives us the most flexibility for the future. Should we lose a lawsuit or legislature makes, makes a change, it will soften that blow over the next couple of years afterwards, and then we start to get our budget in line to try to level out things. So, I think that that's what I've gotta support.
Well, I'll tell you what, we're gonna give you 25 minutes back to yourselves that we didn't have before. So, the time is 7:04 PM, we're at the end of the work session. We will move into the regular session of the City Council at 7:30. Thank you very much. Good discussion that I got.
Good afternoon to, the time is 7:30 PM, and we're moving into the regular session of the Capella City Council. Just as a reminder, persons wishing to speak during our citizens' appearance must sign the register located outside the council chambers and list your home address. Reverend Samesh Jacob, with the First United Methodist Church, is here to give our invocation, which will be followed by our pledge allegiance, so please stand and remain standing. Thank you. Reverend Samesh.
Thank you, Mayor, and all the members of the council. Let us look to God in prayer. Let us spend a moment in silence remembering the situation of escalating tensions and conflict in the Middle East region, and the repercussions in the world, the war in Gaza and in Ukraine, and also the political and social turmoil in Bangladesh. Let us pray. O God, you have made us in your own image, and by your Spirit, you work to redeem us through Jesus, your Son. Look with compassion on the whole human family. Take away the arrogance and hatred which infect our hearts. Break down the walls that separate us. Unite us in bonds of love, and work through our struggle and confusion to accomplish your purposes on earth, that in your good time, all nations and races may serve you in harmony around your heavenly throne. So guide the nations of the world into the way of justice and truth, and establish among them that peace which is the fruit of righteousness. You are the source of all wisdom and understanding, and so be present with these who take counsel here in our city's council meeting to continue doing the work of our community. Bless them, that they may consult together for the common good, direct their thoughts and words, concerns and deliberations, that all their decisions may be pleasing to you and be for the welfare of all in this city of Capella. Through Jesus Christ, our Lord, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, please be seated. Item number five is our citizens' appearance. Persons wishing to speak must sign our register and list their address. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to two minutes each. An individual's speaker time may be extended for an additional two minutes with the approval of the majority of the council members present. Person signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks by any speaker shall be made against any member of the council, mayor, individual, group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberations from the City Council due to the Texas Open Meetings Act. Once the timer sounds at two minutes, the mayor or city secretary will cut in and make their request to the City Council if they would like to expend the speaker's time for an additional two minutes. We do have one person signed up to speak tonight, and that's Mr. Burrows.
Thomas Burrows, I live at 138 Windpage Drive. Pervaseeza. If you, if my location is examined, and you would see, the only way to get to this location where I live, other than helicopter, is that I have to drive by a business owned by a council member. And if I go out the other end of my neighborhood, I drive by close to your house, within 40 yards. I walked it off. So, the comment at a public meeting by a city council member, that I drive around town looking for, the council member Carol's there, or Ms. Hinojosa's house, I don't even know where you people live. I don't wanna know where you people live, because if I drive by your house, I might be accused of something. So, you know, I didn't really do anything wrong. So anyway, retraction would be great. Streetlights are not working. If we're the number five city in the, in the United States, street light on North Ditten Tap Bridge busted, streetlight covered by trees on Ditten Tap Bridges, construction at the Methodist Church for a lot that doesn't seem to have a code permit, and the erosion code around it. Dead limbs sticking out over Sandy Lake just west of Ditten Tap. Massive number of limbs growing over various streets, Ditten Tap, Sandy Lake, you know, when they break and hit somebody's windshield. On Ditten Tap, from this street out here to the next street up, I think, whatever that's called, Freeport, whatever, there's a massive number of telecommunications limbs in the thing. Last but not least, last month, Atmos did not do bills or meter reading. They overcharged every person in this town 50%. When I said that I didn't wanna pay that, they said, well, we'll turn you over to collections and possibly take out your gas meter. So why should I pay for gas that I didn't use? And when I talked to the city manager, I was told, that was not assistant city manager, that's not a concern of city council.
Your time has expired.
Okay. Ask for extension for five to 10 seconds. Why is it not an issue for city council to be concerned when Atmos chart, you know, if you use 10 units of gas in June, and then in July, a hot water heater and a furnace, which I don't use, they now say I use 15 units, and every single person here that has a gas line, we all got overcharged. Here's the-
Which I consider pissed by, by utility-
Thank you for Tom, thank you for your comments. Now, I'll have the city secretary make copies of this for the council members present. Item number six is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is routine in nature and generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget. Our House Council actions, any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available on the screen. Council, do you have any items of the consent agenda that you have any questions or would like to have pulled from the agenda? Councilmember Carol?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item number six, A through E.
And seconded by Councilmember Hinojosa Smith. All in favor?
Walker, Hinojosa, Smith, Carol, Neves, Prem Kumar, Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number seven is a, consider approval of a maximum proposed tax rate of 4.6222 for the 2024 tax year, and set the public hearing on the budget and proposed tax rate for the regularly scheduled city council meeting on August 27, 2024, at 7:30 PM. Ms. Tien?
Thank you, Mary and Council. This agenda item is being brought before you to consider approval of a maximum tax rate for the 2024 tax year, which is the '24-'25 fiscal year. This item is proposing a maximum tax rate of .462222 cents. This is a record vote, which is required by the Texas Tax Code Section 2606, regardless of the tax rate being proposed. This record vote is required to be included in the notice of public hearing to vote on the tax rate that's published, and which must occur at least five days prior to the public hearing date. This notice will be published on August 17 in The Rambler and on August 18 in The Gazette. The public hearing and the meeting to adopt the budget and the tax rate is scheduled for August 27. This item is not a vote on the tax rate, it's only a vote to publicize the tax rate will not exceed .462222. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Council, any questions for Ms. Tien? Seeing none, I, Mayor Protim Neves?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve agenda item seven, considering approval of a maximum proposed tax rate of 0.46222 for the 2024 tax year, and to set the public hearings on the budget and proposed tax rate for the regularly scheduled city council meeting on August 27, 2024, at 7:30 PM.
Thank you very much. I have a motion, do I have a second? Councilmember Carol, is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor?
Walker, Hinojosa, Smith, Carol, Neves, Prem Kumar, Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number eight is our city manager's report with project updates, future agendas, and direction from work session.
Thank you, Mayor. For those that aren't aware, this week, utility billing kiosk went out of service. We've had some recent instances where the kiosk is malfunctioning and basically spitting the check back out. That is not how it's designed to work. So, it's taking a little bit to get that fixed, and so we're working with the vendor to, to make those repairs. In the meantime, utility billing in the library and facilities are working to prepare the library book drop for acceptance of water bills. We have done this in the past. So beginning on Thursday, August the 15th, customers will be able to place their checks and payments in the library drop box in front of Town Center. Please do not insert cash in the library drop box, though. We'll be getting the word out on that. South Beltline, the contractor is installing the electrical service for the digital sign. Woodhurst, all the water sewers and storm drains have been installed. Street paving from cul-de-sac to Hillhaven is complete, and sidewalks are being constructed. Dart, they completed the Freeport Parkway crossing and the southwestern crossing. They will be closing one lane on South Capella Road beginning on August the 19th. And Fire Station Number Five, the storm drain installation on Moore Road is complete, and the roadway is back open in time for school opening, and they will continue to work on onsite utility improvements. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Item number nine is mayor and council's reports on recent and upcoming events. Just an advance warning, our, if you would like to make a difference in your community, please listen up, apply to serve on one of the City of Capella's boards or commissions. Learn about our boards at the capelltx.gov/boards website. The application period will begin on August 26 and go through September 20, with interviews being during the last latter part of October. Item number 10 is public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation permitted. I would like to make a note, and, and I wish you had done it when Reverend Samesh was here, to keep the family of Sergeant Randolph, a Fort Worth police officer who was killed in action yesterday. Keep his family in your prayers. Does anybody have any PSAs? Mayor Protim Neves?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind the community, I'm sure as many know, school's starting this week, so we've had several of our surrounding districts start on Monday and, today, and Capella ISD will be starting classes tomorrow. So wish everybody a successful launch to the school year.
And watch out for traffic. Any other PSAs? Thank you very much. Item number 11 is necessary action from executive session, which we had none, so therefore, there being no further business before this council, we are adjourned at 7:43 PM.